Order together. Danielle Field Hall, roll please.
Sure. Vice Mayor Peters.
Here.
Councilman Gray.
Here.
Councilwoman Gray.
Here.
Councilwoman Knappel.
Here.
Councilman Petty.
Here.
Councilman Lawrence.
Here.
City Attorney Person.
Here. First item on the agenda is consideration for approval of the minutes from last meeting. Motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is citizens' concerns. We had nobody email in that they wanted to speak at the meeting, so that's that. Mayor's report. We've got a few things on the land RFP that we did for the new.
Might have a citizen.
The land RFP that we had put out in the paper, we had no, zero response. Nobody had any land they wanted to sell or anything like that.
That's for the new, for.
For the new town hall location. Um, as far as your pickleball court goes, I have actually got with the engineer down at the Dogwood Park, we're looking at putting in bathrooms, a pickleball court, a stage, and a pavilion along with electricity. All through hopefully a grant, if not, we'll come back and talk about price and stuff like that.
That's fantastic.
So, we looked at rehabbing the other one, but you know what's gonna happen? If we cut the basketball court down, people say we want to play basketball, so we're just gonna build another one if we can get that.
Yeah, that's right. So, this, that's great.
Okay.
And we definitely need the bathrooms down there.
Yes, and electricity.
Mm-hmm.
Also, if you guys are getting calls about these water samples that they're mailing out to people, they did not come from the city. This came from a private company trying to sell water purification systems. This has nothing to do with the city, the city did not put these out. This is a company trying to gain business, and they put the word Carthage right here like it came from the city. It did not come from the city, it's a sales pitch. As of now, the money we gave the UCHRA to help our citizens with their water bills, we've helped eighteen applicants for a total of thirty-six hundred and eleven dollars. We've got, uh, three more in the pipeline, because it takes a little while to get it filled out. So, the money that we donated is really helping out our citizens. So, we did a good job on that. And that's gonna be about it for me. Now, we got the committee reports, I know Derek's got a report.
Can we go back to citizens' concerns?
Uh, Derek, you have a report?
Yeah, I just wanted to make y'all, the council, aware that, I don't know if y'all have noticed, been driving around, there's about five spots, five locations in the city where the road has just started collapsing. This just recently happened in the last couple of weeks. Uh, probably the worst spot we got is on Dogwood in between Jefferson and Jackson Avenue. And all of this is in line with the, with the sewers. Uh, so our sewer lines are starting to collapse. We need to start focusing, uh, some of our time and attention and resources toward that, which we're gonna try to do some small sections, like the in-between streets in-house to, uh, save some money there, so. Down in front of the pool on Industrial Drive, it's caving in there. Or else, there's several spots. Dogwood, um, and Jefferson. Meyer Terrace, where it comes out on College, there's a spot right there that's came in the road. Cullum Avenue going down the hill toward Jackson's. There's several spots all over towns that just, just started happening, so. Just wanted to give y'all an update on that.
And as far as the grants go, we did, our ARP money is fully approved. We are working with the engineers, we should start getting, pretty close to getting busy out for our water lines and sewer lines on Carmack. Carmack, Hillcrest, and some other. So, that should be coming up pretty quick, so we might hopefully get started construction in the springtime. Okay. We're gonna go to unfinished business. The first item on unfinished business is the second reading of CO-20231102-2 ordinance regarding city contribution amounts for employee healthcare insurance. Does everybody remember what that is?
Pretty much, yeah. Do we need to make a motion that we?
We need, it's either approved or didn't. We approved it once, this is the second reading, approve the ordinance for the second.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do you wanna do that for a call, just because it's?
Yeah, we'll do roll call.
Vice Mayor Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Councilman Lawrence?
Yes. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the crosswalk parking update from Engineer White. He is going to call in. And we can call him now, and he's gonna give us an update as to what his recommendation is we do about the parking. And if you want, we can go to the next item while she's trying to get him on the phone. It's quotes for the Spring Street fence and basketball court. Did we skip number two? Number two was taken off the agenda because there was no ordinance needed to change this one street.
Understood.
Going on to four? Number four. Quotes for the Spring Street fence, basketball court, that'd be Councilman Peters.
So, um, trying to get the quotes, we've only got one person, uh, one company, uh, that has put in to do that, uh, but we've, there could be a better way for us to do it. We could save on the material costs by the city, getting the materials ourselves, so we can get them tax-free, save some money there. And then we're talking about, uh, potentially having the, uh, Public Works Department to put it up, so we can save actually a whole lot of money if that's something that we can, um, agree on. I would make the motion that, um, we look into the city buying the materials and us putting it up ourselves.
We can stall them.
That'd be my motion.
I'll second for the point of discussion.
Okay, discussion?
I'd like to hear from Les, is that something that's feasible for y'all to do?
I'm a bit worn up, but we can, we can try it.
Uh, you know, I don't wanna doubt too much, I'm sure.
We can try it, we've been, mayor's talked about it, I think, you know.
If you, if you're comfortable with it.
Well, I've actually got experience doing it, so I can help you.
The mayor's got, he's gonna be down there too, so.
Yeah, but he don't get paid as much as you do.
Well, he's.
Moving on.
All right, and our motion's been seconded, and I.
Any more discussion? Okay. Do you want to set a dollar limit on the amount of spending?
Yeah, I, I, I believe, um.
Do you wanna finish this motion? And then him put it, or do you wanna amend it?
Well, I wanna amend the motion.
I can amend it. So, the motion would be for, um, us to have a limit of, say, twenty-five thousand. I believe that'll be too much, I mean, that, that, we won't touch that, but at least up to twenty-five thousand for materials and us put it up ourselves.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Let's do a roll call on this one also.
We didn't have a second?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, okay, roll call.
Vice Mayor Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes. Yes. Okay, we'll keep going until we get the engineer to call in, and then we'll go back to that item.
I'm calling, he said he's ready.
Okay. Matt, come close to here, I don't know how well the.
Hello?
Yes, can you hear us, Evan?
Uh, yeah, I can hear you.
Can everybody hear him? Yes. Okay, if you'll give the update on the, uh, study that you did, uh, on the engineering for the possible changing of the crosswalks and so forth.
Okay, um, so, given the original, uh, restriping, relocating, changing of the parking spaces out there, um, several years ago, that intersection's a, uh, a pretty bad intersection for side distance being able to see to pull out. So, that was a real item of concern, so, uh, taking those three spots out, that gives anybody on Third Street, uh, more time to pull out from a certain, on a right turn at a stop condition on the, on the line. We could fix the other side, because the building is actually, of course, blocking, uh, not parked cars on the opposite side of the building, so that's why we didn't address that one, there's no way to move the building. And also, you always try to run your assistance perpendicular to the travelway, uh, for another safety reason. And you don't wanna move your crosswalks out into the middle of crossing traffic, so. That was some of the concerns, um, we ran it through several different planning cycles and, uh, of course, the council. But then when we looked at it, if they was to move it, um, again, it's kinda, uh, it kinda goes against the safety though to move it, but if it was, uh, if they're gonna charge you to come immobilize, because they're no longer in the area. They have, that's a thermoplastic crosswalk, so it's a melted plastic, so it lasted a long time, so they actually have to melt that up and scrape it and then put the site right down, so. Just rough ballpark fears are, it would probably be around ten thousand, um, at the most, to get someone to come and they can do that. And they would have to blackout what's there, so there's no way to completely get rid of the crosswalk with a thermoplastic.
Hey, hey, yeah, we got a long question from Councilman Petty?
Sure.
Uh, now, you talked about it had, it's best to have it perpendicular, perpendicular, but yet we've got one that is not in the city, and, um, so, as far as I know, it's not been a safety hazard there.
Which one?
No, I'm not saying that you can't, dude, I'm just saying if, if there's a way to do it, it's safer. There, you know, it's, and you have also supposed to have it comply as far as certain slopes on where your quarry crawls. So, there's lots of criteria that goes into how to place one. But the main concern is side distance on Third perpendicular to a right turn out, because the way it was, if someone could pull out before and get hit very easily, because they couldn't see to, to pull out with a stop and turn right on red, which is a liquid maneuver.
So, what is your recommendation as the engineer on the job?
Uh, well, the recommendation's the way it went in, uh, and the way it got approved. So, but it, it's totally up to y'all, it's a, it's a local street, so there's no state requirements as far as, like it being on a state road that you, that y'all are obligated to abide by, so if there were any local streets, uh, you know, criteria there, it's just, you know, that y'all's call. But it was placed, I mean, it was shown the plans as a safety supplement in order to, um, to take, you know, pedestrians and trainee.
So, so in your opinion, is the, where the crosswalk is the safest place for it to be for pedestrians and car traffic?
Correct.
Anybody have any other questions? I do. You don't get to speak, Mr. Bass. Any bus have any other questions?
Well, I'm still concerned about the fact that, uh, there's one that's angled.
Well, I mean, if you got, do you have any questions for him instead of just?
No, no, no.
That's what I'm saying, any questions for?
So, you're saying the overall cost to take out everything, rough ballpark, ten thousand, correct?
Yes, and I can get better numbers, I can actually call someone and get a quote for y'all for the exact same, you know, for that situation.
That's just payment blank, that's not repaid.
And you're saying from an engineering perspective, the safety part, the legal right turn on, at, on a red light, they, that, the people coming up the hill taking a right, you're saying if, say, two to three parking places were added there, that could, you consider that a safety issue, correct? Am I, am I right on that?
Yes, because, yes, because I said they're running twenty-five miles an hour, uh, up through there, you know, whatever, twenty, twenty-five, whatever you wanna take, you're just taking seconds away that they would've had, uh, to pull out in front of someone. So, you're giving the person coming to the north, I think that's north, coming northbound, um, you're giving them less time to react if somebody wants to pull out from Third. And also, it gives the person on Third more time to see a car coming, because it's not blocked by an object.
So, can it, can it be moved at all? Maybe not three spaces, but could it be moved? I realize it's gonna cost, but I think even if we could add one in there, it would be really helpful to the businesses, especially the Kim farm and art there on the corner. I know that's a lot of money for one parking place, I get it.
Yeah. Whatever you move it, the stop bars have to be moved, because you have to have them so far off the crosswalk, so it's four feet past the crosswalk. So, uh, everything gets redone, so your side stripes, your yellow stripes, your lights in your crosswalk, so it's not just the crosswalk being restripped.
Cause looking, looking at it, I looked at it this week, and you could probably move it up and get one and still have that crosswalk there, it would just go into that adjoining parking area across the street, kinda like the one on Ward Avenue does. Ward Avenue doesn't really go into the sidewalk.
That's true. What we are talking about, what he said was blacking out what's there.
Not repaving, just basically, or taking up the, the plastic and then, like, kinda like, blacked tall over top of it.
And we've done some of that, right? In the beginning, did we not have to remove some because there were some other?
No, I made them repay it.
It was repaid.
Yeah, I made them repay it, cause I, we paid three hundred thousand dollars for a brand new road, and it looked horrible.
That's my concern, is what it's gonna look like after.
You know, it will always bleed back through for a while, um, you know, over time, there's, it's real hard to hide. The other option is just like they did before, you'll have to grind it out if you never want it to bleed back through the black.
No, that, that didn't work very good at all.
Right, it doesn't, uh, as far as, you know, having a ceiling and everything, so.
Any other questions for the engineer?
Has the planning commission looked at this?
We don't have any plans, we, we gotta come up with a plan if we're gonna change it to send it to the planning commission. We don't have a plan in place to change, does that make sense?
Yes, they, they've seen it about six times.
Well, I mean, they, but the original plan, yes, they haven't, if we come up with a change.
And that was over a space of a lot of time too, though. So, I can see why there would've been some misunderstandings about.
Well, I mean, it was voted on, and they went through planning, and then we came back and we looked at all the plans right here on thing, and we voted on it, and just took an extra year to get it done because of.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, it took a while.
All right, if nobody has any questions, we'll let the engineer go, is everybody good with that?
Think so, then.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank y'all.
See ya.
Sure.
Need a motion on that for anything?
Whatever y'all wanna do, whatever.
Listen, I, I'm, I wish we had more parking spaces. I don't want, I don't want us to have spent all that money and then we look down and it looks terrible again on a brand new road. So, I would make a motion if it's even needed to leave things the way that they are. Though it's not popular, but that's my motion.
Do you have a second? Permission to speak?
Well, me.
You can, I'll let you speak in just one second, okay?
I understand what the, the engineer's saying about the safety, however, there's still common sense here too. Drivers are supposed to use caution about slowing down at a red light when they make the right turn, there's a yield issue there, okay? So, they're supposed to do that, so, plus the red light there has slowed things down a little bit.
But hey, did you hear what he said about the law? The stop bar has to be four feet away from this, and it has to be so far away from the crosswalk. So, if we add in a parking spot, that means we have to move the stop bar and move the crosswalk, the crosswalk would be like right in the middle of the intersection. That's what he was saying. Now, we're gonna let Mr. Bass speak, if everybody's okay with that. I need a motion.
Motion, later, speak.
Yes, just suspend. Yeah, suspend the rules.
Okay, motion, suspend the rule.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Judge, go ahead.
Thank you. The only thing that I wanted to address, what he said, was the safety issue is, is paramount to everybody, but I can guarantee you, you've, you've got a turn lane in eight o'clock traffic going to school, and those slots. People do it every day of school is in session. Now, if that's a safety concern, he's, you made it worse, because they're using those, that active, it's your space to turn in to go to high school. Every day I see it during the week. Secondly, I'm not even sure that you oughta have that, that walk there to begin with. Uh, if you got one on the upper side of the street, why does that not serve the same purpose as it is down there at the post office? Cause you got the same situation there, you've just got one crosswalk there, not two. So, it's like to me, you could eliminate that code.
That's an option.
And, and again, all I'm asking for is parking, and that's what Kim wants, that's what Abel's needs, is just restore the parking. And, yeah, he, he talks about a safety issue. Keep in mind, one, one of the things y'all did was make that, that curve, that angle slightly different and longer to, to eliminate issues of, of backing out. And that, that helps a lot, it does. But that also takes care of a safety issue there, it gives you more space, more, or opportunity to see traffic as it comes out. But I guarantee you, the safety issue has gone backwards. If, if Evan was there at, at ten minutes to eight o'clock, as I am in the morning, seeing people go through there like that, like a turn lane, it happens every school day. I appreciate your consideration, I think it's an issue that, uh, that, uh, that needs to be addressed, and I'm, I'm finished with after tonight, I'm not gonna bother you anymore, but, again, if you were in my place, what would you be satisfied with?
If, my question now is, if the crosswalk's taken out, how many spaces could we put there?
There were four in, in the old picture. I, I looked at.
With, with the new configuration, that's a question of three.
There were four.
Cause of the angle.
That's what, that, that was my question, exactly.
Four back in it, cause the angle is like.
Yeah, the new configuration, three, okay.
Yeah, we knew when we reangled it, we were gonna lose at least one.
Yeah, block. But we wouldn't be able to put three back, is that right now, because of that bar needing to be there?
I don't.
According to what he said.
I, yeah, according to him, you couldn't put three back there with leaving the stop bar in the crosswalk. But if you vote to take the crosswalk out, I guess you could move the stop bar forward and put those parking spots.
Well, at least if we could get two more back in there.
But, and here's the thing, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this, everybody was aware of this. Everybody was notified of the meetings on this. This should've been something that we were discussing five years ago, or, I mean, sorry, three years ago when this was in place. That was what the plans were, they were put out, public hearings were settled, there was no complaints. Certain individual that owns a business down there was on the planning commission and voted for this. So, we can't say that he didn't know he was losing parking spots, cause he voted on it. So, that's all I'm gonna say, I mean, everybody was notified.
He being who?
The tavern. He was on planning commission and the council when we voted on this. So, I mean, he was aware.
I said we put to a vote, I just, I don't see this, we spent a whole lot of money.
Y'all asked me to do, that's not a problem, but if you tell me to do it, I'll do it.
Motion to go back into Robert's rules.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion on table, leave it as is, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, second.
One that's your motion.
It was mine.
I have a second.
Gail's second. Any discussion? Let's do a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Peters?
Yes, to leaving it how it is.
Councilman Gray?
No.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Knappel?
No.
Councilman Petty?
No.
Councilman Lawrence?
No. Motion fails.
So, what we doing, tearing it up? Somebody's gonna make a motion.
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna make the motion to fix it, I mean, it's up to y'all.
I make a motion.
It's not broken.
I make a motion that we angle the crosswalk and get one or two more spaces back in.
Second.
I think it's, I think is the option to.
It's options to take it out.
That's the only thing you can do, is take it out.
We can't, we can't angle it, because it would be angled, if we put the parking back in, it would be angled into the intersection.
And again, that's gonna be blacked over the, over the entire road.
Terrible.
Wasn't it an anchor before it was replaced?
It was, but it wasn't done correctly.
When you say correctly, though.
That, I'm, I'm not the expert, I'm going by what the engineers we hired did, they said this is how it has to be.
No, he said that's the way they normally do it, he didn't say have to be.
Well, okay, then we'll use that terminology, this is the way they normally do it.
It's not a state road, it, it, a state road had to be. But I understand what he said, it's not a state road, can be moved.
Would this have to go back before the planning commission?
Yeah, everything that we would do has to go back before the planning commission. And I need a budget on how much y'all wanna spend?
Well, he said he could get back with us with a direct quote, so I think we do need to see that. I mean, he gave us a ballpark of ten thousand, but I think we need to see a little bit more exactly. You know, ballpark's one thing, but I think we need something closer.
Let me show you some pictures that I took about parking, okay? I've done it at different times, you can ask Les, I've been there, checked. There's a lot of empty spots on that side during the day, from nine o'clock, two o'clock, there's a lot of empty spots. So, why are we gonna add more spots if there's empty spots already?
Why are we gonna spend ten thousand?
That's what I'm saying, why are we gonna spend ten thousand dollars if a lot of spots aren't being used?
You're condensing it, we're gonna spend ten thousand dollars to make our road look, our brand new road look terrible for two parking spots.
Well, there may be times when there's empty parking, but there's times when there's not any. I went to David's office a few months ago and had to park down at, uh, at the corner of Second Avenue to get, I walked all the way up to his office, as close as I could get.
I'm not disagreeing that times are full, I mean, I would, I would agree with that a hundred percent. But the times that I've taken the pictures, there were spots, and there's times it's full.
There's probably some spots right in there.
Well, of course, in the afternoon, because all the businesses are closed, and the lawyers offices are closed. We gonna make a motion, or are we gonna move on to the next item?
We have a motion, but do you, do you?
We don't, because we can't angle it, so do you need to be out in a budget, or? I mean, Evan's gonna have to know what we're doing before he can give us prices.
The only option is to leave it alone, or take out the crosswalk altogether. Somebody wanna make a motion to do that? Or do we leave it alone?
If nobody makes a motion, I'd make my motion again, as if we're not gonna take it as an option.
If nobody makes a motion, we're just gonna move on to the next item and leave it as is. And then if you wanna do some more research on it, or whatever y'all wanna do, we come up with a motion, it doesn't matter. But we can't just sit here and just look at each other for the next fifteen minutes.
Well, I'll make a motion that we get Evan to give us exact costs.
On what?
On removing.
And then repaving, or leaving houses? No, no repaving?
Well, maybe they can get off it, get the paint off of it, the stick.
So, just glass it. That's what I'm saying, like, when I call Evan, I have to know what you guys want. So, you tell me exactly, are you wanna make that motion?
So, removing it. And, well, what he said needed to be done, because we would have to remove the substance, not paint, the plastic. And, and what would make it look the very best that we could make it look, that's what I would think.
But you gotta, you gotta make sure you put in a restripe, both sides, cause we have to restripe it, change stop bar, add three parking spots, that's, that's what you want done, right? That's what makes you want.
Would the stop bar help with the moving?
Yeah, you have to have a stop bar, cause of the red light. But, uh, and then you want to add as many parking spots to that location as possible, is that, is that fair?
And that's a motion, right? Then I'll second.
We'll do a roll call vote on that, if there's no more discussion.
Oh, oh, we can't leave the stop bar where it sits, I mean, just a little bit further back.
It has to be so, he said it has to be so many feet away from the parking spot. I don't, I don't know that, I'm not an engineer, that's what he said on the thing, did he not?
And didn't say that it was on, it was ten thousand dollars just to?
Well, it's ballpark.
Melt up the line for the.
I asked the question, I asked the question, everything.
Okay.
And he said ballpark, ten thousand.
Exactly, but he doesn't know what we want, we have to tell him what we want, or he'll give us a price.
And he said he could get back with us with the specific numbers.
Right. Any more discussion? Roll call?
Vice Mayor Peters?
No.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Gray, Councilwoman Gray? Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Councilman Lawrence?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is new business, uh, need the approval for the council. Uh, need the approval for the council to put Cindy West, the new cashier, on the signature card for both Lewis and Bank, and Citizens Bank?
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Councilman compensation, council compensation for meetings, did y'all read your email on that? As of this meeting, y'all will pay fifty dollars a meeting. And the reason that is, is because it's in the charter that says we shall pay you, we have to pay you. If you don't wanna accept the money, you can fill out, we'll come up with a form and say, I'm donating this back to the general fund. But it's your money to do with what you please.
Did they set it at fifty dollars?
We set it at fifty. I mean, it's open, we can set it at whatever, but we set it at fifty to start off with. Does anybody have any?
The council voted on it and set it at fifty?
Yeah, on the budget.
All right.
I wouldn't do away with it, um, I don't know, everybody else fills the table, but it'd be interesting to see, so I'd make the motion that, uh, that goes to zero, or it goes away, we don't get paid.
Okay, in order to do that, we have to change charter, that we gotta do, that guy has to go.
I just wanna see if I get a second.
General, you have to.
Okay, we, we got a second, okay, now we can.
Okay.
You gotta try and do this right.
In order to change the city charter, you have to have a private act passed by the general assembly. We can do that, but it's, it's a hassle.
My understanding is that there was, years ago, they were being paid, and that was before me. Um, and then I think when the city was having some struggles, they did away with it at that time, so they suspended it. But, yeah, it's been a long time since that's.
Right, but I mean, we, we have to follow that charter by the letter, and it says we shall pay, so we have to pay. But you can donate your money back to the general fund if you do not want to accept it, that's y'all's call. I'm not suggesting you do that, that's just the other option we have. You'll have to sign a letter saying, I agreed to donate mine back to general fund.
Not if this passes, though.
We can't change it.
You can change the charter.
Yeah, but we, that's gonna take about a year.
Were you not part of it when we?
Yeah, I voted against it.
Yeah.
Wouldn't have to.
It takes about a year to get through all the general assembly and get them to vote on it.
It would be simpler to just donate.
Yes. Everybody else gets paid for it, so I mean. It's not a good way to look at it.
It's a minimal, it's a minimal amount to get paid.
Yeah.
Especially under different, uh, regimes.
We haven't.
When you have three and four meters of, of money, it's just not fair. Maybe, I, my thinking is that would curb that a little bit.
That would curb what?
The length of the meetings is what it's getting.
Not the length of the meeting, it's the number of meetings.
We don't, we don't have them like that, we used to.
That's exactly right.
Uh, I, we signed up for public service, guys, we're not supposed to, that, that's not what we're here to do.
Well, I don't think anybody asked for it. I mean, I never have, I've been here forever.
How do you know it's in the charter?
Well, that's for me.
But I did know that it had happened at one time.
We're, we're trying to do things the right way, and that's the right way. It's y'all's choice whether you take it or don't take it. So it's, how about we do this? Individually, if you decide to take it or not take it, you, I'll get a, I'll have the attorney type up a letter saying you're gonna donate it back, and then we'll just donate your portion back if you want it, if you wanna keep it, keep it. Is that fair?
No, sir. Nope, because I have a motion on the floor, and I have a second. Okay, so we should vote?
Let's vote.
I'd like a roll call, please.
Okay.
To do away with it, to change the charter, and do away with it, even if it takes a year to get rid of it.
Hang on one second.
By law, uh, after this meeting, I'm writing everybody a check for fifty dollars, cause that was what we budgeted, okay? And then, if, and that means that's gonna go on in ten ninety-nine, if they get paid more than six hundred dollars in a year's time. So if they donate it back, they're just gonna be cognizant of, that they're just gonna take a check and donate it back. Either way.
It's gonna be on the ten ninety-nine.
It's gonna be at ten ninety-nine.
Right.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Peters.
Do away with it, yes.
Councilman Gray.
No.
Councilwoman Gray. Councilwoman Canapple.
Leave it as is.
To pay?
To pay.
So, no. Um, Councilman Peggy.
Leave it as is.
Councilman Warren.
Yes. Hmm.
I'm gonna say vote, leave it as is. But I'm not saying that we can't put in later for a charter change and then do it that way.
Then you.
If we started to. Go ahead.
If you started it tonight, then it would be the charter change, even if it took a year, it'd be a year from now that it would change. So you're gonna wait a year, and then we're gonna look into it.
No, I'm saying we can bring that up again, if you wanna bring it up another time, maybe get some input or something and see if you can get a change.
It's hard to get people that are getting paid to vote to not get paid. So that's probably not gonna happen, it would either be done with now, or it's probably never gonna be done with. So it's a waste of taxpayer money, in my opinion, I'd like to move on to the next item, I'm done, that's out.
Uh, the next item, I need an approval for appointment to the BZA, KCL Rock.
Now, remind me what a BCA is?
Board of Zoning and Appeals.
Okay.
They, they meet maybe once, twice a year, it's like, you go to the planning commission, you get turned down, you can appeal it to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Allow them.
It's a legal, it's a legal thing, there's no variance there, and so we'd be a good one to be on that.
I'll make a motion, then we do that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Got one opposed. Okay, I need to add something to the agenda, if I can have your permission to add something to the agenda.
What?
I would like to make a budget amendment. We have a fourth position in the streets department that was not funded because we were gonna do some other things. But, uh, after looking at some of the costs and stuff that we have, I'd like to fund that position and apply it and put it out for someone that's good at concrete and asphalt. Reason being is we spent like fifty-six thousand dollars last year just in asphalt and concrete. If we could do that work ourselves, we'll pay the city money. And with the new, I don't know if you caught it or not, but we're gonna start doing our own sewer line work, not gonna hire contractors, we're gonna start doing it. See if we can do that, we're gonna do our own paving, not big jobs, but the little patches and stuff. Everything we can do to save money for the city. We're gonna send some people to school for pump repair, like the pumps at the sewer plant. Our people are gonna be able to repair those, buy a repair kit at a fraction of the cost and save thousands of dollars. But we're gonna need a couple more employee, eventually we're gonna need more employees, but we'll save, I'd say it's gonna be upwards of hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Just a ballpark. So I'd like to have the approval to do a budget amendment to move that money into that salary line item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please. All right, discussion?
Clarify if that's general fund or, or sewer.
If that's gonna be in the general fund, it's not gonna be a more sewer fund that's teetering on the edge. Also, I'm probably gonna use, there's five thousand dollars in there for part-time, I'm probably gonna use that in the next couple weeks to hire, find, find someone that can do that.
Well, it's just here now that we've got road issues already coming up, they're the leads.
Yeah.
I just, I mean, this, this is a serious issue. Road start taking.
Sounds like we need to start looking at cutting the budget somewhere, so we have money for all the repairs.
Well, the biggest, the biggest repairs are gonna come out of the water sewer. That's where we're at, and we can't, there's nowhere to cut in there, I mean, you can find some, we can find a few dollars here and there, I'm sure. But remember, we had to raise the water rates because we was running the negative.
Remember.
But if we start doing some of this repairs and stuff ourselves instead of hiring contractors, that will help. I don't disagree. Result.
Vice Mayor Peters.
Hold on, one second.
You gotta put a dollar amount to that, how much, how much are we asking for a budget amendment for?
And are you moving from fund to fund, or is it within the same fund?
It's within the same fund.
Okay.
About sixty-five? Sixty-five dollars.
Cover salary benefits.
You say that will cover salary and benefits.
We're gonna be independent on their experience, as a maintenance worker too, cause we want an experienced person.
This is not a new position, this is one that we just didn't fund because we were trying to be.
So they cut them short, as you would say.
Cause we took Steven from the street side and put him in the sewer plant when Drew left, and we never replaced him in the street side. So they're actually one short, but we didn't fund that position because we were trying to save money. But I think we'll save more money by funding that and getting someone that's proficient in concrete and asphalt work. If we can find somebody and can save more money that way. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Peters.
Yes.
Councilman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Canapple.
Yes.
Councilman Peggy.
Yes.
Councilman Warren.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?